Paula, can you hear us?
I can now.
Okay. We didn't have our mics on yet because we haven't started.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Whoa, lost a picture.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming on yet another wintry evening, but it is February, so we should expect that. I'm going to call the February 12th Board of Ed meeting to order, and we will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the January 22nd minutes, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Brendan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Mary, did you oppose or abstain?
No, I just said "I" too late.
Okay, so Mary voted yes. Thank you. And now we will, so the minutes are approved. Now we'll turn to public comment. Is there anybody signed up or online who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing or hearing none, we'll move on to Board Chair's report. I just want to let folks know that we have two board members with us online, Paula and Mary. And you may notice that our Acting Superintendent Neil Weathers is not sitting up here at the table with us this evening. If you're watching, we have his stand-ins for this evening, and it takes two of them, Albie Harris and Beth Ann Burnett. We're having, we're asking, I'm asking people's patience tonight. Neil is under the weather due to a fall on the ice and is, it's better that he's not here with us tonight, given his injuries. So he'll be back, and he's been, he's been operating from home, and Beth and Albie have been standing in, in his stead and substituting for him as needed. So that's why we have them both up here with us today. We're going to change up the agenda a little bit because we have a special presentation this evening from our consultant, Mary Broderick, from Cabe Search Services, who is working with us on the superintendent search process, and she's going to be sharing the results of conversations with stakeholders and the survey with stakeholders with the board and the public tonight. I want to remind folks that the superintendent search, even though you haven't seen much of it, except for us asking you for your feedback and input, has been going on behind the scenes, being handled by Mary Broderick, and the board will be meeting in March to review applicants for the position and make a decision about which candidates we would like to invite in for a first set of interviews during March, and then which candidates make it to a second set of interviews. So things are moving along on schedule, and we'll be hearing from Mary this evening. We also are going to be going into executive session early on in the agenda, which for those of us, those of you sitting in this room and those of you watching us on, online, will break this meeting for a little while so the board members who are present here today can convene in a conference room to discuss with our attorney Jessica Ritter, who is here, and HR staff, the teacher's contract, which we have to take action on publicly, and we will do that later on in the meeting, but we'll be disappearing for a little while to do that. When we come back from those, that, we will then get into the, you know, working part of the meeting. So thank you, everybody, for your patience. I want to urge folks to go to the Wyndham Public Schools website and check out the tab on Elementary School Consolidation. There is a lot going on. We have another forum, I mean, a public input and education session on the proposed consolidation tomorrow afternoon, where they're permitting. We have two more events on the 20th coming up at the Community Center, one at 10:30 in the morning and one at 4 o'clock in the afternoon at the Community Senior Center, where people can come learn about this. And we're also going to be having a Zoom-only, not in-person forum on the proposed elementary school consolidation on the 25th of February from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, and you'll be all getting more information about that if you would like to join us via Zoom for that. And I think that's where we are at, from the Board Chair's point of view. Oh, I also want to share that the board did get a memo from Neil Weathers today regarding the appointment of an interim head of Human Resources for the school district, and there's details in that communication. We can talk about, we can add it to the agenda later on today if we would like. We just didn't have it in time to put it into the board packet. So I, it was sent to the board members this afternoon, and you got a hard copy. And board members who are present today, don't forget to pick up your budget book at the end of the meeting today. And Mary and Ildis now with us online. So Mary, Ilda, and Paula, we will make sure that you get the budget book, because the first budget workshop is next Wednesday, the 19th of February, and I hope every board member can be there when we have our first look at the proposed budget. We have to work on this budget with Rita and Neil and the rest of the staff so that we can, by the town charter rules, get the budget book to the Board of Finance by March 15th. So we have two working sessions scheduled, and I hope people will be there on the 19th when we discuss the budget next week. Okay, so now I'm going to invite Mary Broderick up to the podium to present the findings to us. Thank you, Mary. And members of the public who are here in the audience, if you would like a copy of what Mary is reviewing, Lauren over here has copies. So raise your hand if you'd like copies, or come get them from Lauren. Thanks. Thank you, Mary.
Well, thank you. As you and I'm sure the community know, the hiring of a new superintendent is the most important thing a Board of Education can do. So it was really important, and want the community to know, it was really important to this board that you get as much community input into this process as possible. I spoke, conducted 14 interviews, and then there was the survey available, focus groups and interviews, I should say. I spoke with 40 individuals, and I'll get into the results of the survey and the focus groups in just a minute. But before I do that, I'd like to just especially thank Grace Martinez for her help in spreading the word about the opportunity to participate, and to Katina, okay, Katina, for her help with translation and both of the opportunity to participate and also during focus groups themselves. So a total of 135 people participated, and I'm now on page three, if you have the document in front of you. There were 40 people who took part in the interview and focus groups, including 12 administrators, 11 parents, eight board members, three teachers, two non-certified or support staff, two members of councils in the town or the boards, and two students. So numbers were a little bit on the sparse side, but there were powerful conversations. And then in the survey results, we had a total of 95 participants, but you'll see that people identified themselves in several ways. So there were, it shows 117 there, but that is 95 individuals, if that makes sense to everybody. Okay, so what did all that information deliver? In terms of strengths, the district really stands out for its commitment to diversity and dedicated staff, strong community relationships, and high-quality bilingual educational programs. The most mentioned strength is your diversity, multiculturalism, inclusion, bilingualism. Forty-two people mentioned that. The district actively fosters diversity through multicultural environments, inclusive practices, and bilingual programs, and special shout-outs, and there are quite a few of them, for compañeros and dual language programs, very highly regarded. And people really celebrated the varied cultural heritages and promoting equity in the learning environments in the district. So that was the, by far, the biggest strength cited. Twenty-eight people noted the commitment and dedication of your staff, unwavering commitment to student success, and fostering strong teacher-student relationships as a priority for your teaching staff, and nurturing an environment where every single student feels like they belong and they matter, and they're valued. There were 22 who talked about a strong community connections and a family atmosphere. The schools foster a sense of belonging and a spirit of la familia. Community partnerships enhance those educational experiences. So again, 22 mentions there. There were 15 mentions of your academic programs and the opportunities students have. Diverse learning opportunities, which empower students to excel, enrichment activities, and the opportunity to gain college credit through partnerships with Eastern and University of Connecticut. And these obviously help prepare students for a successful future and help with critical thinking skills and lifelong learning. There were 12 participants who talked about your student-centered approach, prioritizing, placing learners at the heart of all decisions. I wish that were true in every district, just really focusing on what students need, and personalized learning opportunities and responsive support systems. Now, we're getting into lower numbers, but there were nine who mentioned leadership and how there is an empowered leadership team that exercises autonomy in decision-making and fosters innovative practices and responsive strategies. Seven mentioned communications. You'll hear that that's also considered a challenging area, but they felt that there were efforts to communicate effectively with families. There were six who mentioned resilience and perseverance, and really trying to overcome challenges that families face with determination and grit, and the district maintaining a positive, growth-oriented mindset. So those are the strengths. So what did people say about challenges? Well, you'll be really surprised to hear that budget is a challenge as you begin your budget process again. There were 30 mentions of budget, that there is a consistent struggle to have sufficient resources for serving your students as effectively as you'd like. There is a sense that the Board of Finance is frequently requesting budget reductions, and it's hard to get the service, the resources that you need, especially since the children in this district are often suffering from the effects of poverty. And it's hard to implement long-term improvements when you have that kind of resource deprivation. There were 26 people who mentioned poverty and student needs as a challenge. I'm sure that isn't a surprise to you, that just finding the essential supplies, meals, transportation, stable housing, the social and health challenges that result for students as a result of those needs, and that schools can find it difficult to meet the growing needs of students in poverty. There were 23 who mentioned retaining teachers and morale. They talked of high teacher turnover and burnout, managing numerous initiatives and handling student behaviors, struggling with limited professional development, and constant change in staff disrupts children's instruction, educational opportunities, and that further affects their performance. The next most mentioned challenge is the school facilities consolidation and transitions. Aging school buildings, and we're not in one of them. This is such a beautiful room, but you do have aging school buildings, and some schools suffer from outdated facilities and uncomfortable and sometimes unsafe learning environments. And the district has opted, as you know, for school consolidation rather than investing in some of the existing infrastructure, and that has sparked a debate in the community, as I'm sure you know. And I, it's great to hear you talking about more sessions to make sure people are well-informed about the transitions. But the closure of Wyndham Center Schools and the relocation of 5th graders back to middle school was mentioned. There's a little anxiety among staff, students, and families as they, you know, naturally, as they adjust to new expectations. There were 18 people who talked about student behavior and school climate with concerns, really talking about high suspension and expulsion rates, and aggressive student behavior and bullying, and the need for consistent discipline policies and stronger administrative support to address those challenges. I have to tell you, I'm seeing this more and more in communities. This is coming up regularly as an issue across the board demographically in this state. It's a part of just about every profile I've done this season. So they feel the need for consistent, sorry, just said that, but a proactive approach and the focus on social and emotional learning and improving student-teacher relationships to try to address those. Now, seven people had talked about communication as a strength, but there were 16 who talked about challenges in communication and building community trust. There's a sense of a lack of centralized information source, and that leads to misinformation and some frustration. And I'm sure it probably feels, those of you who are doing communications probably feel like, we do, we communicate, we communicate, we communicate, but if it's, if there's, this is another area that I see in every community, that you can't communicate enough, and people have to be ready to hear it. If, so there's a lack, so the language barriers also prevent some families from fully engaging in their children's education. Again, 42 cited the diversity and equity in staffing and curriculum as a strength, but there were 15 people who found challenges in this area, with the, talking about a lack of racial and cultural diversity among staff, and feeling that there should be a focus on hiring diverse staff, developing cultural competence if you're educators, and ensuring that the curriculum, and I know these are things you've paid attention to, but ensuring the curriculum reflects the experiences of all students. There were 15 who found the issues with the academic performance and curriculum. They felt that the math curriculum lacks explicit instruction, and felt that the district should consider curriculum revisions and targeted interventions and help educators with greater flexibility to support student learning. Another, another area that I hear a lot in other communities as well. And people also, I know you have some great partnerships with Eastern. People would like to see those partnerships strengthened, and just continue to find ways to provide those opportunities for students. So what does this mean for what you're looking for in a new leader? The first two pages here are really right out of the survey. So the 95 people who participated in the survey. And if we look just at expertise, we'll talk first about expertise and then about qualities people would like to see in a new leader. In terms of expertise, the areas that, and it was a really distinct preference for three areas, especially as people's first choice for what they want to see. Number one, at 28%, was builds trusting relationship with students, staff, and community. Number, actually tied for second place, we're at 20% is communicates and collaborates effectively in schools and community, and has experience running a school district. That's unusual to see that one as high as it is. And actually, when you come to people's top three choices, that one kind of drops out. And the two really strong ones that people want to see are the building trusting relationships and communicating and collaborating effectively. Is everybody following me with that? Okay. So you'll see that then, experience running a district, district in third place now, but those two are in the, over 20%, and that one is 9%. So it's a big distinction. Now, if we look at the qualities people want to see in a new leader, very first choice is someone who is accessible and approachable and visible, both in the schools and the community, and that's at 31%. So that's way ahead of the other areas. The second is keeping student growth and well-being the primary focus. So easy to get distracted in decision-making and, and forget what you're here to focus on. And then the third is trustworthy, honest, and respectful. And those are your people's top three choices as well. So what does all that mean in terms of sort of more of the qualitative responses? People want to see this leader really focus on trusting relationships with students, with staff, with the community at large. This person needs to be welcoming and compassionate, and really committed to fostering a safe environment and making sure everybody in the district feels valued, staff and students. Forming genuine relationships, recognizing, rec, I mean, educators, as you well know, have had such a hard time over, certainly over the last five years. And I think acknowledging and valuing the efforts that people have put in goes a long way toward making people feel like their efforts make a difference. And they want to make sure everyone feels included and heard. And then the second, they communicate and collaborate effectively. They feel this person needs to be a really good listener who values the input from students and staff and parents, and makes well-informed decisions, has informal conversations. Is coffee and conversation something you've done in the past? It sounded like a title for something that, yep, that, that kind of thing is really appreciated, making sure that families feel heard and included. This person also needs to bridge relationships between this board, the town council, Board of Finance, and be an advocate for necessary funding and support, and a networker who consults with people on the front lines and nurtures a parent advisory group, brings open-mindedness, confidence, and an ability to deal with difficult personalities sometimes. I would say has experience running a school district is not a deal breaker. If the person comes without that experience, as far as your participants feel, but it, the people thought it would be helpful because of just all the different talents that it would be. It's help, it's helpful if you have that experience already. But again, they want somebody who is accessible, approachable, visible, fosters trust and engagement, makes sure parents and students feel comfortable with leadership, takes the time to really learn about the community, its history, its strengths, the challenges that exist here before making changes. This is something that comes up a lot. It's so important for a new leader coming in to seek first to understand what is and why, and before changing things. Even though there's a lot of pressure on people to come in and make their mark, it's really important that people know that they know why things exist before they do that. Familiarity with a small urban environment would be very helpful. And again, the leader should have a presence in all the schools, and again, keeping student, keeping students at the center of all their decisions, and demonstrating caring and maintaining a growth mindset. And finally, this person needs to be trustworthy, honest, both respectful and respected, embrace diversity as a strength, prioritize equity and inclusion and diversity as a strength, prioritize equity and inclusion and transparency, and develop an organic vision, that, that was interesting language, that reflects the community's values and its aspirations. So that's what I heard and learned. And just for the sake of the public, I think it might be helpful to hear what happens with this now. So first of all, the deadline for applications is Friday, and in early March, as Lynn was saying, the board will be selecting people to interview, and then the interviews will be mid to late March to start. So this document will help the board in its selection process of that, of its candidate pool, whom they'd like to see. It will help, I mean, it will be shared with your candidates so that they have some idea of what they're getting into, and it would be helping you formulate questions for the interviews as well, and then your ultimate, you want to find the best match for Wyndham at this point in time. I have to tell you, it may not feel like it, but this was a really positive leadership profile. And I do a lot of these, and I'm doing some right now where that's, it just doesn't feel the same. And I think it's a real tribute to all that you do and the, the community here that you've have been working to build. So any questions?
Any questions for Mary? This is very thought-provoking for us. I urge all the board members to think about how we might approach the questions so that when we get together in March, we can start giving Mary some feedback on that. Any questions for Mary while she's here with us? Katina?
I, Mary, I really appreciate that in your broad experience of having done this, you just lifted our morale and hope by saying this was very positive.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katina. I'm just hoping that there would be more people who want to come, put their hat in the ring when they, or feel good about having done so when they read this. Like, it's very clear for them to get a sense of the district.
Right, right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
We'll let you drive home in, in the winter weather.
Thanks very much. See you soon.
We'll see you soon. So the next item on the agenda is to go into executive session, and we're going to be stepping out of this room and going into a conference room with our attorney, Jessica Ritter, and Grace Martinez from HR. And is Rita coming in too, or is it just you, Grace? I just want to name who's going to be coming in. Just, Rita's coming in also? Okay. Which means we'll be having an executive session in private, and we will not be going into a Zoom for that because we thought we were going to all be in person, and the room isn't set up for it. I will try to call the people who are at home. And Paula has opted out because she was in the negotiations. So I will try to call, I will call Mary and Ilda when we get into the room. Okay? And folks, hold on, and we'll, when we come back, we'll resume the meeting. I, I would, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina, second by Mark, with the people that I named going into executive session. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. It's unanimous, we're going to go into executive session. We'll be back.
Okay, folks, we're coming out of executive session at 7:56. And we're going to resume the meeting, just waiting for Katina. Okay. Thank you for everybody's patience while you waited. And now we're on to the acting superintendent's report, and I assuming Albie and Beth know who's doing what. So I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As Lynn mentioned, myself and Beth will be going through the acting superintendent's report. And first, we're going to start off with attendance here at Wyndham Public Schools. I want to let everybody know that I attend attendance meetings throughout the district. They meet weekly in all of the schools, all of the members of those committees, administration, counselors, teachers, support staff, everyone's working really hard. When we look at the information, we have the attendance rates, and it compares 2025 to 2024. But for 2025, it's just the first half of the year versus 2024 is a full year. Okay? Or actually, those two are even.
I think you need to move them like.
Sure. And what we see is that our attendance rates overall are higher this year than they have been the previous year for the vast majority of our schools. That's daily attendance rates. Next, we have the data on our chronic absenteeism comparing 2025 to 2024. And if we go through, you'll see in the first chart, and then if you turn your page, it'll tell you which schools are lowering and which schools have hired. First, overall, district-wide, we're 2.99% lower than last year. So that's collective from all the schools. Want to let people know that our early childhood center has a 15.93% lower than last year. So they're working very hard at our new early childhood center. I think that is helps. And then also Liz Baumgartner will focus on attendance. So this is a great way to have quality attendance at such a young age. Another major shift is Sweeney School is 10.6% lower. So great job there. Natchog, 6.3. Wyndham High School is 5.4, North Wyndham 3.1, and Barrows 1.42. So all those schools working really hard impacts our overall district, which impacts our accountability index. There are a couple of schools that have gotten a little higher, not much, but they're also working on it. So that's attendance. If anybody has any questions, but once again, it's for the first half of the school year.
Anybody have any questions on the attendance figures that we're seeing? Happy to see the movement in the right direction. And I would note that Phoenix Academy is an outlier in the stats here. There are so few students in the school that, you know, one or two students missing fluctuation changes the rate greatly. But I'm not making excuses. It's just.
And Phoenix Academy is set up, and it's a school where we have students that have attendance challenges to begin with, but still working very hard. Then moving forward, we'll look at our discipline data. And it goes through number of incidents, out of school, in-school suspension, right, and expulsions. And this is in the top box. This is for 2025, the year to date so far. And then if we do a comparison, which is the chart below, we have less discipline in school and out of school and expulsion. So schools are working very hard. And you can look at the number of incidents when we look at the elementary, middle, and high school.
I have a question. I usually also ask, is this number of incidents the unique student? So there is 132 individual students at the middle school or 132 incidents reported? See what I'm saying?
Yes. And so sometimes we have students that are reported twice, and that's why there's a difference in the numbers. So.
Usually I ask for the also the individual list because it gives the wrong impression that we have 132 students misbehaving instead of five of them, you know, repeatedly.
Yeah, because we have a combination of those that are repeat.
Do that again.
Those numbers there under ISS unique and OSS unique in the chart.
Correct. If you look up above.
If you look up above in the green, ISS unique, OSS unique.
Yes, but I assume that the number of incidents were all kinds of incidents that were reported, not only those that merit OSS or in-school suspension. See what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying. I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. No problem.
So do you want a response on that, Katina?
Yes, I think I remember in some of the data in months and years back, we would have the number of unique students that were doing.
That's the green at the top, the ISS in the ISS unique.
No, I guess I'm not communicating well. I'm not communicating well. It's my, what I'm trying to say is, okay, these they must have had many more disciplined referrals than two at Natchog. Are those unique, so are those unique students, two separate students, or the same student once got ISS and another time got?
Correct. Yeah. So there's two incidents. One had ISS, another one had OSS. For their total of two.
Okay. Thank you.
We can, maybe you can unpack this more, Katina? Yeah. Because I'm not really clear what you're asking. Anybody else have any comments on this chart? Or questions? Mark?
On the pink total here, where we have total actions, 23, 24, and 25 year to date, am I assuming 23 and 24 are full year or year to date?
Those are full year.
The full year. So I'm not actually comparing. So 149 may not necessarily be a reduction from above. It's just that's year to date. Okay.
That's our current where we are year to date. That's us.
Because another part you gave us year to date.
Comparisons, yeah, on the attendance. But no, that's where we are for 2025 year to date. So.
So are we tracking to be lower?
Yes, we are tracking to be lower.
If you think about the number of months that are left in the school year relative to the number of months we've already gone through. If this is through January 31st, we're tracking lower.
Because we're halfway through the year. So if we just double them, we'd be lower.
Unless more actions happen during the spring and summer. Just a question. At other places, you gave us year to date broken up. This place you didn't. I was just asking for that.
Right.
Does anybody else have any other questions? I talked to Neil about getting this information periodically throughout the year rather than at every meeting. So when I had my last conversation regarding this, I think we'll hear again in April and then again at the end of the school year. So we should get some more information in April. So if people have any questions about how they would like or suggestions about how they would like this information presented or some question that they have, if you could get it to Neil's office and CC me. get it to Neil's office and CC me before March sometime, so that, I mean, before the end of March, so that that information could be pulled together for an April meeting, one of our April meetings. Thank you.
My part's a little bit easier. I'm just here to announce that Representative Johnson will be holding an education panel here in the Wyndham High School auditorium on February 27th. And the start time is 5:30. And Representative Johnson was here, I think, last time and also talked about how she's actively engaged in the special education legislative committee, right? And she's holding some listening sessions right now. So we'll be hosting this particular education panel here again February 27th, 5:30.
On that note, I have to work that night down in Bridgeport, so I won't be here. But Susan asked me if somebody from the Board of Education would be able to be present at that forum and talk about what's happening in our district, you know? Share some of the, she wants, this is people coming from outside of the district. So she would like to hear a report on Wyndham that shows off a little bit about what we're doing here in Wyndham. So if anybody is interested in representing the board there and giving that report, could you please let me know? You don't have to let me know right now, but if you're available and able to go, we should work on that. Thank you.
All right, our next topic is Congressman Joe Courtney's visit to our North Wyndham after-school program. You'll see a picture of everyone who was there together, not only Congressman Courtney, but Representative Johnson, Senator Mayor Flexer. We have our board members also there and our mayor. So it was a great event. We were really excited and so were the students and staff to have so many people participate and be at our after-school program at North Wyndham. I also want to thank both Desiree and Vanessa for working very hard to put this together. Desiree is the coordinator, well, Fides is the coordinator at the site, and Desiree oversees all the coordinators throughout the district. They do a fantastic job supporting our students in our after-school program throughout the district. So, and you can also see from a couple of their pictures Congressman Courtney involved with the students and also representatives. They're also coloring and interacting with our students. So it was a wonderful, wonderful event, and we were thankful for everybody attending.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Albie or Beth? Okay, appreciate it. Good job pinch hitting. Now we're on to committee reports. And Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you for ad hoc elementary consolidation committee.
Okay. Well, we met on the 4th. We had discussion, we reviewed the committee forum and the think tanks that we had had. And one of our consultants, Antonia, gave a review of the forum and wrote us a list of questions that we were developed at the forum that we decided to put into a future or frequently asked questions sections on our website. And we're working on getting those questions in the right order. Neil went over the school-based meetings that we had where we met with the teaching staff of each of the grade schools. I guess, as I said, we did report on the think tank forum where we had community representatives there. Rich, our other consultant, gave an update on the land testing progress. About two or three of them have begun and the other one is about to begin. We had another discussion about the timeline for referendum and the need for discussion with the town to move forward. We agreed that we were going to add a virtual Zoom meeting for our community forum for members of the community to participate in, which will be Tuesday, the 25th, 7 to 6:30, or 7 to 8:30.
7 to 8:30.
7 to 8:30, thank you. And we agreed that we were still planning to be on time to possibly put the state grant application in by the end of June and then possibly, and then follow that up with the actual referendum, again, possibly in September or October. Those are things we need to work out with the other town boards. And finally, we approved the payment of $24,000, $24,076, 64 cents invoice to cover the expenses for the testing and some of the other issues and printing that we've done so far.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any questions for that committee or comments? I just want to thank Mark and the members of the board who have come to some of the forums, if not all of them. It's been pretty interesting to hear what people have questions about and concerns and suggestions about. Curriculum. Mary, I'm turning it over to you.
Okay. We met last week or two weeks ago. I actually forgot the date now. Paula, Neil, Beth, Pam Kavanaugh, the principal of the high school, and I were there. We approved December minutes. We discussed the calendar of topics for the curriculum committee meetings this year, which include the health sciences pathway at the high school, middle school, high school connections, K-12 music arts curriculum, and teacher feedback on, you know, implementation guides, as well as legislative updates in late summer that impact curriculum. Pam Kavanaugh suggested also some topics for future meetings about related to high school grade weighing that would be more in sync with the program of studies. It does have a policy implication, so the curriculum committee needs to discuss this with the policy committee as well as with the full board, I believe. Pam Kavanaugh suggested a change in the name of one of the high school pathways from business, engineering, technology, to business manufacturing, engineering, and technology. And she gave us a very informative presentation, which included a lot of information about job fairs, about the exciting courses that the students are taking, which include UConn and Eastern courses. I don't know if Paula has anything to add. Okay.
Your speaker is not on, Paula. Is there anything?
It was a great meeting, but no, Mary, you covered it well.
Yeah, so I don't know if anyone else on the board has any comments. Oh, I did want to say it's very hard to make a quorum because five people are technically on this committee, but there are people who never show up. So I would like to make sure that we're following the law.
On that point, I do want to say that board members did ask to be on certain committees last fall, and I put you on those committees. And if you cannot make a meeting for a committee, you really need to get in touch with Neil's office or the chair of the committee before the meeting, please. And if for some reason you have had to rethink whether or not you can be on certain committees because of your schedule, please talk to me directly because I can certainly rejigger the committee assignments. But we want to make it so that we have a quorum at these meetings. Thank you. That's not related just to Mary's committee, to everybody's committee. Thanks.
Lynn?
Yes?
Haven't we also, I recall a discussion you and I had that you might have had with Jessica, where we want, we strive for quorum, but quorum is not a reason to cancel a committee meeting.
Right, right.
Okay.
Jessica has made it clear that it's not a reason to cancel a committee meeting, but certainly if there's some important action that is going to be taken at that meeting and it's, you know, sensitive or very important to the functioning of this district, and we have like one or two members there, you might want to defer action. But the point being made that it is the board who ultimately takes action. The committees are only making recommendations. And so we shouldn't not have a meeting if there's not a quorum.
May I suggest, please, Lynn, that you send us that list that you had made again?
It's on the website. It's on the website. All the committee members are listed on the website, but I will send it again. Thank you, Katina. Thank you. If there's nothing else for curriculum, we're on to finance and audit. Mark?
Thank you, Lynn. I do want to, before I go into the report of what we did when we met on the 5th, I see we have a budget transfer for a discussion or for a vote, which we didn't discuss at the 5th meeting. I don't know if, do you want to do that discussion during the vote time, Lynn? Or do you want me to have Rita talk about that now?
I think we can wait until we get to the.
Okay, fine. So we met on the 5th, which was primarily a budget workshop, if you will, for the committee, where Rita and Neil presented a preliminary look at the 25, 26 budget, primarily just the major departments, or as Neil calls them, the major buckets. And we looked at what was in those buckets, and the initial projection was for a 6.4% increase. Obviously, the details of which we'll get into next week at the board workshop in details. They pointed out that there were several key factors driving the budget this year, such as the, well, they're projecting a reduction of 12 and a half positions, primarily through, I guess, attrition and not layoffs. We're already going to be affected by the reduction of the Alliance grant this year of $536,000 that we've talked about in the past. There's a projected 9% increase in our health insurance plans. We're moving, we're possibly moving from self-insured to state-backed plan. We have a decrease in our revenue budget from '04 and '25. The state has already, this year, decreased our special education excess cost from 71% to 64%. The cost, again, again, this year in this year's budget, we have an increased cost in the transportation for homeless students who are being transported to various districts. There's a decrease, we have a potential decrease cost for the Wyndham Center school building once it's closed. And also, we're going to have a less of a, not going to be able to get the full 2% setback that we've had in years past. Those were major points driving the budget. We'll have a full presentation, as I've said, on the 19th, when, after we review our books, and we'll go into the details of that budget.
Thank you. We'll get our budget books tonight, and those of you who aren't here with us in person on the board will get them delivered to your house as soon as somebody can safely get there. I don't know what the weather holds in the next 12 hours, but sometime this week, you'll get your budget books. Okay, any questions for Mark? We did approve a transfer, and we'll talk about that. We did recommend a transfer, and we'll talk about that later. Right?
No, there was no discussion of transfers at the last meeting.
So.
The transfer we discussed at the last.
Oh, at the previous meeting, yeah.
This transfer is just come up, that's why I asked to have Rita explain.
Okay, I'm confused. Thank you.
Okay.
For correcting me.
There's Rita.
No, we're going to wait till we get to that item. Yeah, thanks. Policy report?
Yes, we met this past Monday, February 10th. Thank you, Beth, for pitching it for Neil. And very important, we have quite a few legislative updates of policies that were approved by our board in the past year. So the policy committee recommended that the staff, the pertinent staff, looks at these updates from the legislature, and then we will bring them to you next board meeting for one reading and final approval. But because already we have to update recent policies that we approved. So there are quite a few of them. So the second item that we discussed were the Series 500, which are the district, some of them are the district-specific policies that are not in our lawyer's recommendation. So the pertinent staff is going to look at those policies, and then we will discuss them in the policy meeting next month. Then we'll bring them to the board for two readings. Also, after the staff reviews them, and we will send them to the lawyer to make sure that they comply with all legislative mandates. And that is it, right, Brendan and Beth?
That sums it up nicely.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're on to school planning design. Brendan?
Thank you. We also met this past Monday. A few facilities updates, the work on the 5th grade wing at Wyndham Middle School is continuing and should be complete in early spring as we anticipated. I'll be still working on closing out the high school renovator's new project. And when Sly had some very good news that he's very close to hiring an HVAC technician, which is something that the district has been looking for for a number of years now. So that is, that'll be a big win if we're able to land a on-staff HVAC technician. After that, we reviewed the proposed capital improvement plan for '25, '26, which totals $1,267,000. The biggest chunk of that is to allocate approximately $720,000 for heating and ventilation and air conditioning units, the rooftop units at Barrows. Those are approaching 15 years old at this point. It's hard to believe that building is that old, but they are approaching that age now, and they're starting to fail. That is their average life. Each unit to replace is about 50 or 60,000. Sly was talking about not doing the entire project at once, but as each unit fails, having the money set aside to be able to do the work as it's necessary, it wouldn't save us any money to do them all at once or anything like that. So, you know, this way, the money is set aside, so it's not coming out of operational funds to replace as this happens, but we don't necessarily need to eat the entire 720,000 at once. Other than that, there was $300,000 for the middle school to upgrade the media center and add a maker space, $89,000 for facilities in general for a new facilities truck, another $48,000 for Barrows to continue the installation of pavers on the walkways that currently have erosion problems, and $110,000 for North Wyndham to replace a sewage pump pit that is well beyond its expected life and will definitely need to be replaced before any possible consolidation happens. Any questions?
Any questions for Brendan? Comments? Seeing none, thank you very much, Brendan.
Thank you.
And committee? Now we're on to action items. And the first item for action is approval of the Wyndham Federation of Teachers contract. I would entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Mark. We want to thank Paula for being on the negotiating committee and the staff and our attorney and the teachers' union for having a very successful and cordial process. So any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Except to say that we value our teachers very, very much. We appreciate so very much what they do with us and with the students in the district. And we're very happy to be approving this contract tonight. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Now we have some unexpected budget transfers that Rita is asking us to take action on tonight. So Rita's going to come up and explain what they are.
Sure, thank you. So because they're over 50,000, I had them put on the agenda. Sure, thank you. So because they're over fifty thousand, I had them put on the agenda because they need approval by the board before we move forward. The first one is mainly for increased transportation. I think we have discussed in finance and audit meetings about the homeless transportation increasing and special ed. So that's the first one for two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand. And the second one is an increase in retirements and severance payouts. This year, there's been an increase in retirements, and when people leave, we pay out their vacation time. So we need to move ninety thousand into the fringe benefits to accrue all the retirements for this year. Any questions?
So that's for a total recommended of three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Yeah. Any questions? Any discussion? Yeah. Oh, that's right. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars of budget transfers. Motion made by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising their hands. I think it was unanimous. Yep. Okay, motion passed. And then we have approval of submission of the state bilingual federal Title III, federal Title IV grant applications for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and that's for a total of, what is it? There are three different ones, right?
Yeah, this is just the formality where I present to you the grants that we've already been allocated, and there's three different totals for the three different grants.
Right, and it's all in your packet. Does anybody have any, I entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Deanne Nisi. Any discussion? Thank you for doing all that work. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Okay. And then, is there any other business before the board today? Okay, pardon? Well, we handed it out. I don't know whether anybody wants to take action on the appointment of an interim HR staff person, or whether or not you want to just let the superintendent do that. It's up to you all. I'm not really clear on taking action on an interim, but if we want to, we could. We could add it to the agenda tonight. The person is going to start as proposed on the twentieth, so it would be before we meet again. It's up to the board. Brendan?
I was going to say, historically, I don't think we have appointed interims for, you know, example, as assistant superintendents have left and interims have come in, that sort of thing. So I don't think it's necessary. If someone wants to make a motion, I have no problem supporting it, but I think this is within the acting superintendent's purview to carry out.
I have a.
Anybody have a difference of opinion on that?
I just have a question.
Yes, Ilda.
Is that person replacing Grace or helping Grace?
Grace's last day is the twenty-third of February.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it was announced. You must have missed it. Sadly, she's leaving us for a job in another district. And so as Neil Weathers explained in the memo, we needed to replace her. So the feeling was, just for the general public, that that's a cabinet-level position, and that it's not probably a good practice for an acting superintendent to select that person. And a candidate fell into our lap. It's all explained in the memo that was emailed to you earlier today. If you have any questions and you want to talk to Neil about it or me about it, feel free to do so. But that's what Brendan was referring to, Ilda.
I'd feel comfortable letting Neil choose, since technically it's his staff.
Well, it's not really his.
It's my opinion.
Permanently, permanently, his opinion was that that should be the decision of the incoming superintendent who we hire. If cabinet-level positions open up while the interim is acting, or he's an acting superintendent, not interim, that he felt it would be better to leave that decision to the next superintendent. So this is a temporary measure. Okay, so we don't need to act on it. Albie was nudging me. Do we need to act on it? The board had the discretion to do so. We're deferring to the acting superintendent's decision on this. And as he explained in the memo that he sent out today, there were a lot of people involved in the interview process and the vetting of this interim person. So we'll probably meet her at one of our next meetings. And we want to thank Grace for all her wonderful work for the district, and we'll miss you dearly. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay, so we're up to public comment. Is there anybody who wants to speak during public comment? Oh, Kami, come on up.
Hi, my name is Kami Nyland-Porier. I'm a teacher here in Wyndham, and I'm also the president of the WFT. And obviously, I'm very pleased that the board approved our contract tonight. And I think a lot of people don't realize the time commitment involved in negotiating a contract. So I appreciate the work that our team did with your team, and we appreciate your work, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Kami. Anybody else during public comment? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at eight-thirty-four.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Don't forget to get your budget books, everybody who's here.
Good night, all.
Good night, Paula. Can't get out.